Ready, Diane?
I think it's real.
Diane, are you ready?
Yep.
Okay. Call to order the regular meeting of the Tracy City Council at 6:30 PM, Monday, March 9th, 2020. Please rise for...
(inaudible). (inaudible) of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Stand for the invocation, please.
Good evening all, let us pray. Almighty God our heavenly Father, send down upon those who hold office in this city of Tracy, Minnesota, the Spirit of wisdom, charity, and justice, that with steadfast purpose they may faithfully serve in their offices to promote the well-being of all people through Jesus Christ our Lord. Amen.
Thank you. Please be seated.
Okay, we have the oath of office for Eric Hanson.
I wasn't sure if someone was going to... I had to repeat after them. I was gonna say state your name, but, you know.
Just raise your right hand.
Sure. "I, Eric Hanson, do solemnly swear to support the Constitution of the United States and the State of Minnesota and the Charter and ordinances of the city of Tracy and do faithfully discharge the duties devolving upon me as city administrator for the city of Tracy
Aye.
Teague?
to the best of my judgment and ability."
Aye.
Peterson?
Thank you, council.
Aye.
Mayor Dimmers?
Thank you.
Aye. Thank you. Agenda is approved as written. You're official. Any conflicts of interest this evening?
Do I need to sign this? Okay, I'll sign it now, that's fine. All right, I'll take my chair now, I guess. You never know.
Please have a seat at the dais.
Public comment, anyone from the public wanna step up and comment on anything that is not
I told you it was a railroad tunnel.
Is it?
on the agenda this evening?
Yeah, that's right.
Okay, so did everybody get a chance to read over the minutes from February 24th? Okay. Petitions requesting communications except resignation from Mayor Dimmers.
Move approval of the 24th minutes.
I'll second.
So, provide a little further explanation as to the nature of the resignation. First and second, is there any discussions, corrections? Go ahead and vote. I've been offered a position on the East Coast at Dover, Delaware, and after long thought
Teague?
Aye.
Tony Peterson?
Aye.
Jones?
Aye.
Tal?
Aye.
and some struggle, I have decided to accept that position, and so I will no longer be
Mayor Dimmers?
Aye. Minutes are approved. Do we have any changes to the agenda?
No, just that resolution, it was on there, but the physical resolution was on your desk.
able to fulfill the duties and responsibilities of mayor, so I am going to resign. Okay. So...
Move approval was written.
Second.
First and second, let's go ahead and vote. Initially, I had an effective date of 16 March.
Jones?
Aye.
However, we do need to appoint an interim, and so I can extend that out to allow myself to be present for that choosing of the interim and voting. And then, so, I would say we have to decide when we're gonna do that. We have to get advertised, I believe, and then decide when we're gonna do the appointment of the interim, and I can adjust my resignation effective date to accommodate that.
So why do we have to advertise? That's not the process we did the last time when a mayor resigned.
Like the term that Mayor Dimmers has lasted is more than two years, and under the city charter, given that length of remaining term, we have to advertise, and the council needs to appoint a mayor to serve out the remaining term of his term. With... The charter does require advertisement, and it doesn't specify how long, but my advice of the council would be, you have to advertise, and it's to the general public at large, but to avoid any disruption with the function of the council and to smooth the transition to appoint someone that's currently on the council to serve as mayor until the election in November, and then whoever is elected to serve until that successor is elected, just to minimize disruption on the council. So that's what my advice would be. Councilmember Tal is a mayor pro temp, so he will be mayor until the council appoints the person to succeed Mr. Dimmers. So Cooley will be there until the council formally appoints after advertising, so... And the term of the person that's appointed will be from the term of appointment until January, first meeting in 2021. So that's something to take into consideration, so I know Tony, Dave, and Coo, you're up for election in November anyways, correct?
Yes.
So whoever is appointed, they give up that seat, and then they're up for election in November. So that's something to take into consideration as well for the council, too.
So if I adjust my effective date, then I would remain mayor until after the appointment? Or until the appointment?
Not the way the resolution's written. You'd have to adjust anything.
Correct.
But then I can't participate in the...
Pick on your replacement?
Yes.
You already did that. When you appointed a pro temp, you already picked your replacement.
Okay.
That's the way it's written, correct?
Well, the pro temp would serve until you guys appoint a mayor.
Right.
Yeah.
But we have to advertise. We can't just appoint the pro temp.
Correct.
But you don't have to advertise like two weeks.
There's no limit on the term of advertisement, so...
So if Pear got it in the paper this week, we could have something...
I would say at least a week, probably.
Before fire next meeting.
You could appoint somebody at the next meeting.
Correct.
Okay. It's not like it would be a...
Yeah, it's not like it would be a special meeting after the advertisement has ran, and then you guys could appoint.
Can't we just do it at our next council meeting?
Or you could do that as well.
Yeah.
Just like, no need for a special meeting.
We could just appoint at the beginning of the next meeting, and they would run the
meeting then.
Yes. Well, I mean, technically they have to be appointed, so they won't run until after they were appointed.
Yeah.
Right.
But we do like... Mayor Dimmers, then, yeah, I was under... I guess I drafted the resolution that you would be gone before that person was appointed, but you can adjust it accordingly depending upon your schedule.
Okay.
If there's a gap, then obviously Commissioner Tal would serve as mayor until appointed.
Right. Right. And I'm, you know, there's... Within my absence, that leaves four, which is an even number. So that was where my thought pattern was on that, is that there's no ties that way.
All right, first, a shorter period, that's gonna amount to, you're not gonna see a tie anyway.
Just making sure all the Ts are crossed and Is dotted, and, you know. So, the next meeting is on the 23rd. Is that correct? Yes.
Mm-hmm.
And I wouldn't be here for that anyway, even with an extension.
Right, that's...
So, I mean, I have a little wiggle room in there, but not that much.
Not that much.
So I guess we will just follow the charter, and, you know, whatever council wants to vote at the next meeting, then...
I'll make the motion that we accept Mayor Dimmers' resignation effective March 16th.
So that's for the Resolution 2010-14?
Uh, yes.
Yes.
I'll second that.
First and a second, is there any other discussion, questions? Okay, we'll go ahead and vote.
Tal?
Aye.
Teague?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
Dimmers?
Aye.
Jones?
Aye.
Resolution 2020-14, acceptance of my resignation is approved effective 16 March. Need to appoint council representative to the planning commission. We have any volunteers for that? You're gonna make me spin the bottle.
Six o'clock on the first Monday of each month.
Basically, an hour, hour and a half a month. Jerry?
I can probably make a 6:00 PM meeting work, once a month.
First Monday of every month.
First Monday? Okay.
I have other commitments, but...
I would then appoint Jerry for planning commission. I need a motion to approve.
So move.
Second.
First and second, any discussion? Go ahead and vote.
Teague?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
Tal?
Aye.
Mayor Dimmers?
Aye. Appointment of councilwoman Jones, the planning commission is approved. We need a representative for the EDA board. Volunteers for that.
Should we draw lots? Say, "I do it again."
Okay. Then I would appoint Dave Teague to the EDA board. Need a motion to approve.
So move.
First and second, discussion? Vote.
Peterson?
Aye.
Tal?
Aye.
Jones?
Aye.
Mayor Dimmers?
Aye. Appointment of Councilman Teague to the EDA board is approved. Approval of setup license for Tracy's lanes.
Make a motion to approve as long as all the fees and insurance and licensing stuff is in line.
Second. First and second, any discussion? Go ahead and vote.
Teague?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
Tal?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
Mayor Dimmers?
Aye. Appointment of councilwoman Jones, the planning commission is approved. We need a representative for the EDA board. Volunteers for that.
Should we draw lots? Say, "I do it again."
Okay. Then I would appoint Dave Teague to the EDA board. Need a motion to approve.
So move.
First and second, discussion? Vote.
Peterson?
Aye.
Tal?
Aye.
Jones?
Aye.
Mayor Dimmers?
Aye. Appointment of Councilman Teague to the EDA board is approved. Approval of setup license for Tracy's lanes.
Make a motion to approve as long as all the fees and insurance and licensing stuff is in line.
Second. First and second, any discussion? Vote.
Peterson?
Aye.
Tal?
Aye.
Jones?
Aye.
Mayor Dimmers?
Aye. Appointment of Councilwoman Teague to the EDA board is approved. Approval of setup license for Tracy's lanes.
Make a motion to approve as long as all the fees and insurance and licensing stuff is in line.
Second. First and second, any discussion? Go ahead and vote.
Teague?
Aye.
Jones?
Aye.
Tal?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
Tal?
Aye.
Jones?
Aye.
Mayor Dimmers?
Aye. Private bottle license for the Eagle Club?
We can approve it as long as the fees are paid.
Second. First and second, discussion? Go ahead and vote.
Teague?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
Tal?
Aye.
Jones?
Aye.
Mayor Dimmers?
Aye. Private bottle license for the Eagles Club is approved. So we need to set the public hearing for the Jeremy Whipple variants. Who has the information on that? Is that Rosemary?
Yes.
I handed out the map. Everybody?
You have the map in front of you, Rosemary Martin, planning and zoning. We attempted to have a meeting on March 2nd. We did not have a quorum, so by the consensus of Shane and myself and Jeff, we decided that I would come to the council to move this project forward and ask that you set the hearing for March 23rd for this variance for Jeremy Whipple. It's the very same one we gave for the EDA Broad Acres project, I think it was in August, and this is the second half of it. It's the same criteria we're asking because the lots are shorter. It will... The only problem is that it's gonna be closer to the north road.
To the back, to the middle.
Oh, to the middle. And so, and there is a tree line in between there, and we have already approved this once. The second time, we've already set the precedent that we're going to approve this, so I'm asking that we move this forward and go ahead and set the hearing to that.
Is this the only other property that's affected by this?
There'll be two more coming down the line if they sell them both at two lots.
Yep.
Just to the south.
Possibly not, if they're smaller.
Yeah, if they're smaller.
It depends on the footprint of the building, but it's a possibility that we could be requesting this again.
What's the advertising requirement on the hearing?
I'm sorry?
Advertising requirement on the public?
Two times, 10 days.
Yep.
So there's enough time?
So we could do Wednesday, the following Wednesday, and then you can have the public hearing on the 23rd.
Third, right. So we can move this forward.
Make a motion to the public hearing for the variants on the 23rd at 6:45.
Second.
First and second, further discussion? Go ahead and vote.
Tal?
Aye.
Jones?
Aye.
Teague?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
Mayor Dimmers?
Aye.
Thank you.
And the reason that they wanna start, or we wanna get this done is because they wanna start construction as soon as the snow's gone and it dawns, so we'll start construction on the new site.
So public hearing will be set for Jeremy Whipple variants on the 23rd at 6:45, is that correct?
Yep.
Okay. Okay, appointment of board members for various committees. Planning commission is the first one. We have one opening and one application received from Rosemary Martin. So I will need a motion.
I'll make a motion that we accept the application of Rosemary Martin to continue on the planning commission.
I'll second.
First and second, any discussion? Go ahead and vote.
Jones?
Aye.
Tal?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
Teague?
Aye.
Mayor Dimmers?
Aye. Rosemary Martin is appointed to planning commission. Police commission has one opening. We have an application received from Rosemary Martin, Peggy Peterson, and Paul Scoglan. Can entertain any discussion on that?
Paul is currently serving. I just let him continue.
I'd second that.
Okay, so we have a motion, and a second. Is there any discussion or question? Go ahead and...
Tal?
Aye.
Jones?
Aye.
Teague?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
Mayor Dimmers?
Aye. So Paul Scoglan will remain on the police commission. HRA board, one opening, applications received from Joe Bierman.
Make a motion to put, or actually to keep Joe on the HRA board.
Second.
First and second, discussion or question? Hearing none, let's vote.
Tal?
Aye.
Teague?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
Jones?
Aye.
Mayor Dimmers?
Aye. Joe Bierman will remain on the HRA board. Library board has three openings. Applications received from Barbara Knutson, Marlene Hoffman, Joan Zimke, and Peggy Peterson. Is there any discussion on this?
Barb, Marlene, and Joan are currently serving, and I know Peggy put her name in only in case one of them didn't put an app in. So I would make the motion to keep their board the same.
I'll second that.
Okay. Any discussion? Go ahead and vote.
Teague?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
Tal?
Aye.
Jones?
Aye.
Mayor Dimmers?
Aye. Library board shall remain the same with Barbara Knutson, Marlene Hoffman, and Joan Zimke, is that correct?
Yep.
Okay. Charter commission has one opening. Applications received, Rosemary Martin and Peggy Peterson. Any discussion on that? We have been kinda going along here with leaving things the same. I would think we could do the same thing here. Unless anybody... Unless anybody has any objection.
Might as well keep it the same because they have to be approved by the judge anyway. She's already had that approval, I don't know if it carries forward or not, but...
Okay. Yeah, I don't know if it does either, but... Do you know, Rosemary?
Pardon me?
You'd have to be approved by the judge. Does that carry forward because you already are?
Yes. I do.
It does?
I was not the guy to...
All right.
Well, then the approval would be required no matter what.
Mm-hmm.
So then it doesn't matter if you wanna change the board or not. Do you wanna stay on, or you want...
Absolutely.
Do you have full membership on that?
Yes, we do.
Okay.
I just have the final chapter. I think we have reviewed all the chapters now, we just need to bring the changes forward.
I need a motion to...
I'll make the motion to keep Rosemary on the charter commission.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
First and second, any further discussion? Go ahead and vote.
Jones?
Aye.
Tal?
Aye.
Teague?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
Mayor Dimmers?
Aye. Rosemary Martin shall remain on the charter commission. Airport board, there's three openings. Applications received from Neil Daniels, Tom...
Strifel.
Strifel. And appoint a council representative. I was on there. I will obviously can no longer serve there as well, so anybody...
Tony, do you feel, I mean, you've been on it in the past, you've got the knowledge base.
Yep, I would agree.
Yeah, I can do that.
Okay.
Now, is that one of the three, or there's three openings?
Well, it's gonna be three.
Three plus.
So we still are gonna have one open.
It was short.
Yep.
And Mr. Mayor, currently, all three are expiring the same term, so if you could, I would like you to appoint one of them to a three-year term and one of them to a two-year term.
Need a stagger.
So it's staggered.
Okay.
The other thing, too, on Tom's, if he's, and I can't tell it here, if he's a resident or not, if he's not a resident, then they have to be a...
Tom is a resident, yep.
Okay. Yeah, I wasn't sure. Okay.
All right, so...
Well, I'd make a motion to appoint Neil and Tom back to the airport board.
Well, they could both be the two, and the next one could be, we can get someone to come forward by saying it's one year.
Well, we don't want two of them to expire on the same year.
The same year.
Oh, if we're gonna have three.
Right, so we need one, one-year term, one, two-year term, and one, three-year term.
Isn't Neil currently the chair?
Yes.
Name Neil for a three-year?
Yep.
Assuming he accepts it.
Yep.
That's what I was thinking.
And then name Tom the two-year, assuming he accepts that.
So we have continuity.
Yep.
And then the new person would be just a year, just a...
Yes.
That would be my motion.
Perfect, thank you.
I'll see if I can talk Kurt into the one-year.
You second it?
Okay, we have a first and a second. Any further discussion? Let's go ahead and vote.
Peterson?
Aye.
Jones?
Aye.
Tal?
Aye.
Teague?
Aye.
Jones?
Aye.
Tal?
Aye.
Mayor Dimmers?
Aye. So Councilman Peterson is approved on the board as well. Request from Lakefield School District for donation of...
Aquatic Center passes.
Oh, Aquatic Center passes, okay.
Well, that's the one I didn't see it in the packet. Yep, I did, yeah.
Should've been... There's a letter in there. So Lakefield Schools will be hosting a fundraiser for the Roush family. She was a senior at Lakeville High School, involved in multiple different organizations. She was diagnosed with Horner's syndrome, I'm gonna attempt that word, but lymphoma, and undergoing chemotherapy at Sanford Children's in Sioux Falls. So they're looking for, they're talking about a day-at-the-pool basket type thing for the auction, so they're just reaching out to see if there's any pools willing to donate any day passes for their cause. So in the past, we've always brought these to the council for their...
Day pass is five?
I think so.
They didn't request any specific numbers of passes, just some...
No, they just said day passes.
Yes. I'd make a motion to donate five day passes to that fundraiser. That is a legal...
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes.
I'd second that. Any discussion? Go ahead and vote.
Peterson?
Aye.
Teague?
Aye.
Jones?
I'd make a motion to donate five day passes to that fundraiser. That is a legal...
Yes.
Yeah.
I'd second that. Any discussion? Go ahead and vote.
Peterson?
Aye.
Teigs?
Aye.
Shones?
Aye.
Tal?
Aye.
Mayor Dimmers?
Aye. Request for Lakefield School District for donation of five day passes at the Aquatic Centers approved. City Administrator Employment Agreement.
Should be included in the packet. I drafted a employment agreement by, for new City Administrator Hanson. There were some revisions that were made. I believe it was approved by Mr. Hanson, so it was in the packet for your review. It was consistent with the council's discussions on terms of employment. So it would be advisable for the city council, Mr. Hanson, to sign that so that it can formalize his employment terms.
I took my oath.
You're spoken to those. The fine print's in 'til death do us part.
I thought that was a different, a different commitment.
I might be getting a mix up.
I, I do wanna thank you for the opportunity and, um, and it is essentially the contract that, uh, that the League of Minnesota Cities does. And we basically filled in the blanks with the terms that we talked about. And so it's a pretty standard agreement from that standpoint. I do wanna point out, I think it's important that, um, you know, we also had talked about a minimum of the two-year contract, which this addresses. And I think that's important for the community because sending the signal that I'm going to be here for at least a minimum period of time, I think, helps, considering the turnover in this position. So thank you for the opportunity and I just wanted to make sure that the public was aware of that component of it.
Good.
That could've required a motion to approve that?
Yes.
I'd make a motion to approve the contract for the city administrator.
Second it.
First and second, is there any further discussion or comment? Go ahead and vote.
Shones?
Aye.
Tal?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
Teigs?
Aye.
Mayor Dimmers?
Aye. The, uh...
Thank you for accepting.
My pleasure.
The, the employment agreement for city administrators approved as written. Resolution 2020-11 declaring March the 2020 Colorectal Month. I think we did this last year by Kamal.
I'll make a motion to approve Resolution 2020-11 declaring March Colorectal Month.
Second. First and second, is there a question or discussion? Go ahead and vote.
Teigs?
Aye.
Tal?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
Shones?
Aye.
Mayor Dimmers?
Aye. Resolution 2020-11 declaring March 2020 Colorectal Month is approved. Resolution 2020-12 Commercial and Industrial Tax Abatement Policy and Procedures. You, uh, you wanna talk to us about that, Jeff?
Have you got any questions on what was in your, your packet?
The, uh, the first one that you have there, um, is something that the, uh, the city has to have specifically to be able to use the Lyon County, which is a new commercial and industrial tax abatement policy. But before you can apply for that, which somebody here in the city has already expressed interest in applying for that, but before that can happen, the city has to have their own policy specifically. So that's what it is. You're not, what you're doing tonight, passing this resolution, the only thing that you would be doing is adopting the policy into the, into the system. And then if somebody wanted to apply for it, they would still have to come here. There'd still have to be public notice and everything, and then you'd have to approve it. So what you're doing is basically approving the policy itself.
So what drives that requirement?
The requirement from, from Lyon County, why they wanted the city to be in there? I mean, the, the city portion is, is the bigger portion. And it's just to, to make sure that Southwest Minnesota, Lyon County, we have people that'll actually, given them the incentive to actually come here and remodel buildings, possibly bringing in more jobs, um, increasing eventually the tax base of, of a commercial or industrial building. But you have to have one, again, you have to have it in, within the city, which is a good idea. Something that, that I actually brought to you and then found out that the Lyon County, before you can do it there, is you gotta have your own policy.
So it's basically just an affirmation that...
Yes. It's, we, again, people would still have to come. Do I believe that you're gonna have? Yeah, I believe there'll be a, a few of them in the next couple of years that will come and ask for that, uh, commercial abatement program. But it's still an application and everything. Go ahead, I'm sorry.
This serves two additional points. One, you can market that, here's our policy in place, and advertise that, that we do offer these abatements. Here's the policy and the terms. And then two, it just eliminates the council from claims that they're arbitrary and capriciously denying people, um, not granting the abatement. Cause you have considerations in place so that you're bound to follow those. So that just, you're just approving the policy and then in order to approve the actual abatement itself, you have to hold a public hearing and then pass a specific resolution for each property that you're granting the abatement for, so...
This is a structure.
Yep. And you could talk about a development plan and everything in that and how much you're going to give and, and it's, uh, I tried to keep it simple for the no more than five years, but at a hundred percent each, whereas the Lyon Counties is at eighty, sixty, forty, twenty. So it's, I just wanted to keep that similar to what we already have for a housing residential abatement program that we've already been using in a couple, a couple spots.
You've done math with us before.
I've done the math with you before. That's why I sent this out ahead of time.
Keep it simple. Okay, so...
I'd make a motion to approve Resolution 2020-12, the abatement policy and procedures.
Thank you. Is there a second? First and a second, is there any questions, discussion? Go ahead and vote.
Shones?
Aye.
Tal?
Aye.
Teigs?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
Mayor Dimmers?
Aye. Resolution 2020-12 Commercial and Industrial Tax Abatement Policy and Procedures is approved. Resolution 2020-13 Amended and Restated Business Subsidy Policy and Criteria.
Now, this is something that I, uh, I had found that, and I can't find anywhere that it's gone through. So, um, the changes that I put in there that we have already actually talked about, the abatement program with some residential, a couple of properties that the EDA actually sold. So if you look on, on page four, that's where the, uh, the changes that I put into this, this, uh, Business Subsidy Policy and Criteria, that already existed. That what was added at the top was just the amended and restated, which is where I added that, those things on page four, which all that does is describe exactly what we're doing right now with anybody who builds new houses or comes in and, and purchases it. Or purchases anything from the city. But if you also look on page two, what this does, and I've gone over this with, with Matt, um, this, it's, it's a general policy, and that's why it says general policy. This, this talks about loans, this talks about grants. It gives you the, the ability as the city council and as the EDA to actually make some, some strides towards getting people to either build here, remodel here. You know, this, this would cover a, a TIF project eventually. You know, there'd be more, there'd be more rhetoric that would come with that on where the TIF locations would be. But this just gives you the ability to do this. I don't believe this has ever been passed through the city.
I'd make a motion to approve 2020-13.
Second.
First and second, is there any further discussion, input, questions? Okay, go ahead and vote.
Tal?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
Teigs?
Aye.
Shones?
Aye.
Mayor Dimmers?
Aye. Resolution 2020-13 Amended and Restated Business Subsidy Policy and Criteria is approved.
Thank you.
Consent Calendar.
Motion to approve the municipal accounts payable without breakthrough beverage in Sanford, approve the planning commission minutes from January 6th and the library minutes from February 6th.
Second. First and second, any discussion? Go ahead and vote.
Teigs?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
Tal?
Aye.
Shones?
Aye.
Mayor Dimmers?
Aye.
Make a motion to apply breakthrough beverage.
Second.
First and second, any discussion? Vote.
Peterson?
Aye.
Tal?
Aye.
Shones?
Aye.
Mayor Dimmers?
Aye. So to recap, municipal accounts payable without breakthrough beverage in Sanford Health, with breakthrough beverage and Sanford Health, planning commission minutes from January 6th, 2020, and the library minutes from February 6th, 2020 are all approved.
Now, we gotta do same for yet.
Make a motion to approve Sanford Health.
Second.
Okay, yep, there it is. First and second, discussion? Vote.
Sorry, Teigs?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
Tal?
Aye.
Mayor Dimmers?
Aye. Okay. Municipal accounts payable, Sanford Health is approved. Unfinished business, ways of transitioning water bills to one month behind versus two.
So the last page of your packet, um, kinda has some information on what's being charged when. I know discussion was brought up in the past of bringing it up to date. It's, it's the last meeting, I guess I wasn't here. I don't, it doesn't sound like there's any discussion on, at, at that point on, as far as bringing it back up to, to date or to one month behind sort of billing. To make the system run more smoothly, uh, like the example here, it says, uh, from one, 120 to... The collection on, select, the end of or the beginning of the month, so like, so the March 1st would be actually January's usage. So it's, it's two months where we'd like it to be, you know, the March 1st would be for February's usage, which is... The problem is when you get renters and they leave their premises, you know, their renter walks out or, well, they leave the landlord for bill. Well, and it's two months' worth of bills instead of one month. So it just, it would help the bleeding. And on top of that, there's a lot of manual entry that we have to do in the Bannion system for the billing. Where if we were a month behind, it would automate a lot of that. The reason we are two months behind is they used to collect all of the meter readings, used to send a card, then you wrote your meter reading on there, they sent it back. Then the next month, they would add it to the bill. So that's why it is where it is now. But now that everything is remotely read, we always have that data, you know, on the first of the month. We would forego penalties by changing it, um, but it's gonna save a lot more time than what the penalties are even worth on the administration side. The biggest thing is how are you gonna transition that? You know, cause you'd have to catch that month up. As far as foregoing any late fees, um, if they are making an attempt to, you know, bring it up to speed. You know, how that, how the, how the council wants to work that, it's up to you guys, but, um, if you guys have any thoughts on that at this point? If you need any more information on it or...
We need to get caught up to the month behind, still the two months behind, that's without a doubt. That's one of the reasons why I got the radio read meters. Has there been anybody, I know we talked about it a while back, where we, if they wanted to pay ahead, they could. Is it anybody or any idea if there's, anybody's taking advantage of that?
I haven't heard anything on that part, um, from them or any calls that come in or emails myself. So I guess I don't know where that kinda sits with everybody, but...
Well, to simplify things, it may not have to forego late fees, whatever. I'm not, you know, that's, that'll be the decision of the staff and administrator. But my suggestion would be to, what is it, March 15th is the next bill date. Say, oh, let the public be aware that the billing cycle after the 15th of July is gonna be the one month. So the, the August billing date would be paying you July water bill. And encourage everybody to pay ahead to pick up that month. And then we just pick the date and go with it, cause if we don't, and that's an arbitrary date. I'm just throwing it out as an example. But that gives, especially those with limited income, will give them time to catch up instead of getting a two-month bill. But they need to be aware, that's what they need to do.
Yeah, the only thing with that is if they don't do that, then they're hit with a two-month bill that they could struggle with. Is there any way that we could phase it in over the course of a couple, three months to make that up? That would make it easier for the people that... I mean, how much work's involved with that? I don't know, but...
Is there a question on that?
That discussion is up to you guys. I mean, how far do you want your transition period to be?
And that's why I threw out the number I did. That's what you're talking.
Three months.
Three months before it go into effect in, in, uh, August. But we'd need to get the word out, whether it's a mailer or, or, you don't have enough room on your bill to write it, but you need it on the crawler, you can put it on the sign, you can...
We could...
You're always gonna miss somebody, but it's, you know, sit down, explain it, and in an article, Herr likes to write articles, so we could get one for him there. You got him?
Have you recognized or...
Sure, go ahead. Can you step up to the podium, please?
Okay. Yeah, thanks. Well, I was just wondering, what about the other monthly, uh, items on the bill? Would incorporate that?
What's your name, sir?
I'm Russell Voice. I'm resident Tracy as of about six months ago.
Okay. And what was your question?
Also, I'm just curi-, I'm just curious, uh, there's a lot of other items on the monthly bill. So how would that be incorporated in this change and this?
I would say that would stay the same.
I don't think...
Yeah, because they're not two months behind, just the water is.
Okay, so the only issue would be the water portion.
Water and sewer.
Yep.
Oh, but the sewer also.
Yeah.
It's like, that's a...
Water and sewer are tied together, yeah.
Yeah, but then there's some other items on the monthly bill.
Yeah, the garbage is on there and the sewer charges.
So none of that is gonna be...
That won't be, that won't be doubled up. That should be all state. We'll verify that, but I think that's all just normal billing.
That should be timely. I mean, it's...
I, I was just thinking about this.
Yep, no, I appreciate the question.
Yeah, thank you. So...
Can I, can I be recognized, Rosemary?
Sure, Rosemary, but please step up to the podium, state your name.
Okay, Rosemary Martin Tracy. I really like Tony's idea of August because it gives people time in the warm weather and they aren't hit with the big heating bills and stuff like that to be caught up. Because of people that are on fixed incomes, or maybe if we could set it up further, Tony, we think June or July, work, start working on it in, in the earlier spring when their bills are coming down. And then they have a chance to catch up before their big winter bills are hitting them again.
But you, that's why we're gonna do is you can pay ahead. So let's say your bill normally is a hundred dollars, so you pay a hundred and twenty.
But, but if your bill is a hundred dollars, your water bill is not all of that.
Right, well, I'm just saying if your water sewer bill is a hundred dollars.
Right, then your water bill would probably be about fifty.
No, I'm just saying if that's your water sewer bill.
For the sake of argument, we're gonna use a hundred dollars as the specific water bill.
Right, right.
So if you paid a hundred and thirty-three dollars...
Right.
Three months in a row prior to that.
You'd be caught up.
You would be caught up.
Caught up, right. But let's do that in the spring and bring it into the middle of the summer.
Oh, maybe they could start, no, I've already started.
Yeah.
When we had this discussion last time, I put extra money on my water bill and I encouraged other people to do that because it wasn't supposed to be an issue on the bookkeeping side. And, but just people just need to be aware of it. So when we do transition that once a month, we may not have to forgive any late fees. Cause the ones who are late are gonna always be late, but maybe they, you know, the ones that prefer to pay the fee. But you, you know, we're not gonna make everybody happy. We just need to make it easiest on us and still collect the dues that we need to collect. So I'm just saying we need to pick a date and say, from now on, this bill's gonna be from one month behind. So if it's the August bill, that's gonna be for July. You got from now till July to pay it extra month.
Right. And then you're going into those, and then you're out of the, you're into the lighter other utility bills during that month. You'll give them time to get caught up to it. That's what, that's my word on it.
Thank you. Yeah, I would, I would agree with that. And we're kinda talking about the same thing as far as making it so that people can ease into it, you know? Cause we don't wanna slam them with two months' worth of a bill all at once. But I don't know that we can really administer that. It would be much easier, I think, for everyone involved if we put that out on the carousel and we put it out on social media and just had a campaign to make sure everybody knows and, and pay ahead. Is it possible to put that notice in with the bill?
There's not a lot of room on that part.
Cause we don't send it out in an envelope. And yeah, like Tony said, there's only like one line and most of the people wouldn't see it.
And we have the parking thing on there right now.
Yeah.
It would cost a little bit more, but it probably wouldn't hurt to send a letter.
Well, that's what I was gonna say. If you send a letter now in lieu of writing off all late fees, that letter to everybody in town's gonna be cheaper than writing off all the late fees.
Right.
Right, I would agree with that, Jeff.
You know, and it doesn't have to go certified or anything.
Maybe if we didn't have so many line items on there, there'd be room.
They only give you so much for the message itself, so...
Right.
I like the idea of a letter.
I mean, we're gonna pay more for postage, but it's only one initially. Yeah, there's more admin time in it, but it would get the message out, cause then everybody getting their water bill would have it.
I would, you know, I wouldn't, I wouldn't send it out, you know, this month. I'd, this month we get in the paper, we talk about it and make it work and then send it out so they know in June that's, hey, you got a month to get it scored away.
Well, recognize, state your name, please.
Barb Hookman, resident of Tracy. Every Door Direct, it's cheap. It's sixteen point four cents. Everybody in the whole city will get a card. So you want to go? In Every Door Direct.
Let, let them know what your background is, so...
I'm a graphic designer. I work at Henley Printing and I do all the mailings there. So you can do in Every Door Direct, it would cost sixteen point four cents to every resident in the city of, of Tracy.
Instead of the normal fifty cents, whatever it would be.
It's like a postcard, five and a half by eleven is the best size. It's the cheapest way to do it. Just a thought.
Thank you. So I would agree with that.
Junk mail? No?
That's a designer, right?
Get the city letter out on it, maybe city logo.
Yeah. Well, and besides, I mean, you, you can only hold your hand so much here. I mean, you know, there, there's a point at which people have to be responsible for themselves. And if we send out notices and they consider that junk mail, then there's not much we can do. We've, we've made the effort.
I think we need to design it so it's something catches their attention with the amount of junk mail that comes in the... I think we need to design it so it's something catches their attention with the amount of junk mail that comes in the, the mail. With the amount of mail people get, I'm concerned it might go into a different pile.
I understand.
So I think you just need to look at the design, and then I still would want Pear to do an article in the paper.
And run it up.
Acknowledging that we're going to be doing this, we're going to be doing the direct.
We can put it out on carousel the week before, so that they know to look for it.
Okay, so we need a point of contact on this that's going to, we've got a lot of different directions going on. So I would like to see one person that will take this on and handle it.
Find somebody.
We need to pick a date when we're going to implement it and then let, let our staff do what they do best.
The city administrator will delegate.
Delegate it to me, and I'll find somebody to do it.
Okay. So our new administrator will handle that, and we want to do that.
Hey, that's something to do.
Welcome to the family, right? So we want to do that in August?
I would, I'd go, we got to pick a date, we might as well pick August first. That's...
The end of the August due date?
Yeah.
The August, the 15th of August will be for the July's bill.
Only more or less have to have that extra month paid by July.
If you want to, we're not, everybody doesn't have to pay ahead. We got to make sure people...
If they want to pay two months right at that time, then they can, but...
Yeah, you don't have to pay ahead.
All right, I think we're flogging a dead horse.
Yeah.
Can I get a motion?
Motion to move the water and sewer bill to one month behind starting August 1st.
August 15th.
Well, the 15th would be the due date.
The due date, yeah.
Right.
Effective date. I'll second that.
First and second, any further discussion? Let's go ahead and vote.
Tal?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
Jones?
Aye.
Teagues?
Aye.
Mayor Dimmers?
Aye. So we are going to transition with the August 1st water bill will be for July with a due date of August 15th. And our sparkling new city administrator will handle, handle that advertisement and getting that out to the public and making that happen. That's been approved. Okay, we have no new business, mayor and council communications.
I've got a couple.
Go ahead.
Shane, this is for you. Are we, and I don't have all my notes, but this street project that we're going to finish constructing this summer, does that involve Harvey Street?
Yes.
The whole branching out, how from where?
Second to fourth.
Okay. The other question on that was, that has, has never, has not been done in the recent past that I'm aware of?
No, and it's pretty rough, too.
Yep. So that, I just wanted to clarify that. And then the other thing goes back to water bills. And I don't have my deal on that either. The, the sewer rate is based on a percentage of your water use, correct?
It's based on your water use in four different months. What is it, November?
March and April and September, October, I believe.
It's half of that. Do you take those four numbers, you average it?
Average those four numbers, and that's what you pay for the year? Based on those averages?
The units.
That four month...
But you take the, so if you had, those four months came out to four units of water, you're going to charge them two units of sewer for the year?
Four units of sewer, if it averages to four.
So it'd be four units a month for the year. So it matches the water.
But if, if, if that, okay, if that, we're getting hung up on the averages here then. If you have four separate months, and each of those four months is one, then the average would be one, correct? So the sewer will be...
One unit.
We've got one out there that's getting charged two. So it's some, we need to look at the math to make sure that it's only...
You want to let Eric know what the address is?
I'll give him this. Because I got the bill in front of me. And, and I wasn't aware it's going on, but I knew, and I didn't have my book to get the formula and give them the right answer, but I knew that it was, it should never be more than your water bill unless...
It could be.
Yeah. But with that type of usage, it shouldn't be. Yeah.
Unless you had zero units of water, but...
Yeah, if you just, if you just give us the information, sure.
I got it right. Those are my questions.
If it's wrong, we'll correct it.
Yep. That's all I have.
The system automates that.
That's, and that's what I figured hap is, is happening, but without having the raw numbers, I wanted the process explained and...
Yeah.
Yep. I'm good.
Okay. Anybody else? In that case, I want to take this opportunity to, to thank the city of Tracy for giving me the opportunity and the honor to serve them as their mayor and to be here with all of you for the last year and some months. It's been educational, challenging, and enjoyable. And, you know, you hear it all the time, it's kind of cliche, well, it's been my honor to do that, but it really truly has been. And that's, that's heartfelt in that not everybody gets that opportunity. So I really do appreciate it, and I appreciate working with you all. Thank you for, for the last year and plus. It's, it's meant a lot. So I hope that I leave Tracy better than I found it when I came in. And I guess this'll, I'll need a motion to adjourn my final meeting.
So I'll move.
Second. First and second, any discussion or questions? Let's go ahead and vote.
Peterson?
Aye.
Jones?
Aye.
Tal?
Aye.
Teagues?
Aye.
Mayor Dimmers?
Aye. And I'll pronounce this meeting closed. You can adjourn.